All right. So I'm Paul Kokamol, our Chair of the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm calling our meeting for Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five to order at six thirty four P M. First item on our agenda is roll call. So I am here. Ms. Bergeron is here. Mr. Boris is here. Mrs. Locktrip is here, and Mr. Rusk is here. Mr. Jenkins and Mr. James are not present. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Certain motion to approve. Motion from Mr. Boris. Second, second, oh sorry, second from Mr. Rusk. All right, any discussion? Anybody have any changes? Any issues? All right. During none, all those in favor approving the minutes from April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, we say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? One extension. This is Locktrump, so.
Move four zero.
All right, and next item on our agenda is a public hearing for site plan number five zero four. K M number three three eight. Pfizer, Care of Bus and O'Neil. Four forty five Eastern Point Roads, demolition of the building one eighty five complex. So I will re. Public hearing. Rules and will look in the, and the public notice and it's real. So. As I mentioned, good evening. I'm the Chair of the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to open the public hearing. For site plan number five zero four. K M number three three eight. Purpose of this public hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicant, proponents, opponents, and all interested parties or citizens. Wish. To comment on the aforementioned application. It's important to note that once the, this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application. And the other member of the commission, the applicant or applicant's agent, member of the public, or interested parties, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. This hearing is being recorded and meeting minutes are being documented. Anyone wishing to speak shall do so from the podium. Please state your name, clearly spelling your last name for the record, and provide your address. Please speak slowly into the microphone and reintroduce yourself each time you speak. The commission uses the following procedure during public hearings. Each hearing will be introduced and the legal notice read. The application, the applicant or designated agent will present the application. The commission and staff will have the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address staff, commission, questions and comments. The Chair will then ask for public comments in the following order. Comments in favor of the application. Comments in opposition to the application. Comments that are neither in favor or opposition to the application. Any question to the applicant, staff, or commission shall be addressed through the Chair. The Chair will pose the question or questions to the appropriate party or parties. Please limit public comments to how the application does, or does not comply with land use regulations for the plan of conservation and development. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address public comments and questions. The commission and staff will be provided further opportunity to ask additional questions and offer further comments. These may be directed to the applicant or a member of the public who previously commented or submitted information for the record. The applicant and members of the public will have one opportunity to respond to commission and staff questions or comments. The commission will then decide whether to close the, to close or continue the public hearing to a future date. Once the hearing is closed, all, the commission is unable to hear additional comments, or accept exhibits, or correspondents in favor. Opposition, or with a neutral position on the application. The commission will then deliberate upon the application. The deliberations were occurred during the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The deliberations will be posted on the meeting agenda, and the public is well, welcome to listen to the commission's discussions. Agendas are posted a minimum of twenty-four hours in advance of a regular or special meeting of the commission. And are provided on the city's website and at the city's clerk's office. During deliberations, commission members will discuss the application and input from staff. The commission will then take into consideration relevant testimony, information provided by the applicant and members of the public. Following deliberation, commission will then vote on the application. Vote outcomes could be to approve, approve of conditions, deny, or deny with prejudice. Are there any questions regarding these procedures before I open the public hearing? For the record, can I read the? Public notice. City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of hearing. City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on May twentieth. Twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. Groton Municipal Building, two ninety-five Meridian Street. Hear the possibility to hear and possibly act on the following matter. Application site, application site plan number five zero four. C A M number three three eight. Pfizer, Care of Bus and O'Neil Incorporated. Four forty five Eastern Point Road. Demolition of building one eighty five complex. Interested persons may be heard and written communications relative to the above matter can be sent via email. That's the city, the city of Groton City Clerk. To look, the city planner. By twelve noon on. On May twentieth, twenty twenty five. The time and location will be on the agenda. And on the city, on the city calendar. And on the city website. Application is on file and may be viewed via email. Here at the City of Groton website. Or at the city clerk's office, two ninety-five Meridian Street, Groton, Connecticut. Date of the eighth and thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty five. The hearing on site plan number five zero four, K M number three three eight is now open. So I will turn it over to, are you Ms. Mello? Ms. Mello, representing Pfizer and Fussel.
I push the button, it says more. All right. Um, good evening. I'm Laura Mello. I'm a licensed civil insurance agent in Connecticut with F M L. Uh, with me tonight is Mike Whitaker from Pfizer, uh, so we can answer any of your questions. And, uh, like the chairman said, we're here to present the building one eighty five demolition project for your consideration. Um, Pfizer is proposing to demolish the building one eighty five complex, which is about ninety thousand gross square feet. Um, it's located at their four forty five Eastern Point Road parcel, um, which they refer to as West Campus. Um, B one eighty five is obsolete and vacant structure. Um, over the past year, Pfizer's been marketing this building for either sale or reuse, um, and really had no viable options. Part of the reason for this is that the building really only contains about four thousand five hundred square feet of usable mixed space. It includes a fermentation pilot plant, a small lab, limited manufacturing area, and an office and machinery rooms. And this, um, patchwork of limited, um. Uh, use, uh, lack, lacked enough space for any one of those categories to have a potential buyer or renter. Um. So for some site details, like I said, it's on their four forty five Eastern Point Road, um, property, which is a fifty four point five acre parcel. On the site, the site in particular is located in the very south eastern area of that parcel, um, and this is in the industrial technology zone. The total project area is three acres. Um, one point five of those acres is the actual building demolition and site recreating and improvements that were showing on the plans. The other one point five acres is immediately to the west of it, and that will be for staging, uh, material sorting, uh, and construction activities, but there will be no disturbance in that area. Um, a small portion of the project falls within a flood zone and is at the very south end of this project area. Um, however, the building and the actual building demolition is completely out of the flood zone. Um, the project site is about sixty feet from the top of the Thames River Shore embankment. And that sixty feet is made up of forty feet of lawn and then twenty feet of roadway that's curved. Um, in terms of. Actual demolition planning, um, pre-demolition planning and permitting is underway. We've been talking with, um, the building department about demolition permit that we'll need to submit. Um, currently, building one twenty five, um, is completely empty. And, um, all systems are powered down. The construction sequence, um, which is on site preparation and erosion site control plans. Um, one of the first installation of erosion sediment controls, disconnection, and then disconnection of utilities. Um, once that, those are done, the actual building demolition will start, and that'll start with interior stripping and structural take down. Um, materials from the building with stripping will be sorted on site for cycle reuse or disposal. Um, there is a preset hall route to one ninety five that's included on Plan G T M P. Um, this follows very similar, if not exactly the same, as a, a project that was approved in the twenty ten, so another building demolition. Um, so trucks at the edge of this, um, Pfizer's campus going north on Eastern Point Road. Turn right on the Chester Lane, Chester Street, left on the three forty nine, and then went onto, um, ninety five. Back to the demolition portion, um, the site will be leveled and moved to buildings removed. Pediment will be removed, the air mew will be graded. Um, foundations will either be left in place or removed depending on depth. Um, and any foundations that are removed will be filled with soil and packed it on, so that there's no voids. Um, utilities will be kept and extracted or filled as required, we should those on the site declaration plans. Um. And finally, the site will be restored with four to six inches in top soil seed for the lawn areas that are proposed. Um, or it's basically one inch stone, um, stone stabilization surface that matches existing campus areas that are immediately adjacent. Um, the proposed grading, um, will maintain existing drainage patterns. Um, sheet flow will journey into one of two or three catch basins that are located on the south side of where the building stands at. Um, drainage Pfizer's existing campus, uh, system and be treated before discharging towards the Thames River. Um, the removal of the building increases impermeable coverage, um, so it's better for drainage, more, uh, water will be able to seep into the soil than what often. Um, so it's improving drainage conditions. Um. And then the erosion control measures will be in place for at least two growing seasons. So if this construction is completed in the summer, um, the erosion controls will be maintained through the fall and through next, next spring before they're removed. Moving into some environmental considerations, um, just piggybacking on the E N S controls. Um, during construction to mitigate any kind of construction dust, um, or the, um. Pollution, uh, water application by spraying trucks, um, stockpile covers and street sweeping will be employed, um, to control that. Construction, a construction entrance will be installed so that there's no necessary trap in the soils. Um, to local or state roads. Um, linear barrier protection such as silk fence or straw bales, um, there's also, there's also straw wattles or called porlocks or silk socks. Um, things of that nature will be employed for those linear barrier protections to be, prevent the mitigation or the migration of, um, soil and sediment from the site. Um. Out of that, out of that construction area. Um, Pfizer is requiring the contractor to perform site inspections for erosion sediment controls once a week. And after significant rainfall events, um. This follows the guidance of the Connecticut Construction Stormwater General Permit, which typically is employed for sites that are five acres or greater. But Pfizer wants, um, the contractor to follow this, um, even though the site is less than five acres, they want them to follow this, so it's a clear sector construction. Um, another environmental consideration is that Pfizer performed building assessments in twenty 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 nineteen for asbestos. Um, the building was abated in twenty twenty four per the regulations, and all asbestos materials have already been removed, so the building, the building is clean. Um, other permits that we're, we're seeking were obviously before you tonight for the major site plan modification and the K M approval. And like I mentioned before, um, we're going to submit a building, uh, sorry, a demolition permit to the building department, um, in accordance with ordinance two hundred, uh, for City of Groton standards for regulations. Um. So, you guys have plans in front of you, um, we're happy to answer any questions you have. That was your overview, I'm closing. So, we, we're here to help you, and thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. So I, just, uh, this, Paul Kokamol again. Uh, just for full disclosure, so I'm a, under certified fighter's employees. So, um. I have no financial or economic relationship with the company. So, uh, my status is, I'm liable, one impact, one impact decision, this project, but I just wanted to make sure that that was the schools. Uh. So, um, Leslie, any comments, any staff comments?
Um, I've gone over this with, um, change specimen deal. Um, we could cut the time and so resume. And I know they answered my questions, um. The, one other comment that I would like to make, though, is that, um. There were no comments received by planning office. From the public. And, uh, we see one, um. Application review sheet from the fire department. And. It is just, there are no comments. It's just checked off that the application meets. Our department agency requirements. Yes, for the fire department.
And do, did we also get one from, uh? This is from the fire department. Or utilities.
We have to say utilities did the view, but, um. It's required on the plan note for everything, um. Except that an electronic copy that the site plan is required, which was received.
Right, but that, that, that's from Chi Water Center Department.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So is that, do we need to submit that as an exhibit for the public here?
Um, the whole files is part of the. So he'll be.
So it's covered there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, anything else, Leslie?
Yeah.
All right, questions or comments from commissioners? Anybody? Oh, so, so I, I've got a couple of, so the, um, the, you mentioned that the asbestos has been abated. Is there any, I mean, the. Chemical processing happened in the building, but you're up, is it?
Yeah.
Any concerns about chemical contamination in the building?
No, it's been abated, um. I don't believe it included, uh, just access to, uh, the reports with the site modification, but that's starting the building. Uh, the demolition permit, that will, those have been provided, so no concerns.
So, yeah, for the, for the asbestos, what about, about any potential chemical contamination, is that also? Is that also potentially an issue or, or not?
Not potentially an issue, Pfizer has an ongoing, ongoing monitoring program, um, and they, they have to do this area to be cleaned environmentally.
Good. Um. How about, uh, any other permits? Does it require a permit from the V D P or anybody like that?
Not deep, um, deep is triggered when it's five acres or greater, and it's like disturbance, and we're only at three.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, so, so we don't, everything, we're not, um, we're decreasing the amount of impervious surface, right?
Yes.
Uh, storm water is, uh, gonna be managed pretty much through the ex, the existing infrastructure, is that correct?
Yeah, so the building will be removed. It is a moderate slope going down about a twenty foot grade change. Um, we created a small depression at the bottom of that slope, um, there's two catch bases in there, so the water will drain into there. Um, if it does, uh, back up a little bit in a larger struggle, then it'll, it'll pour in there and slowly drains those catch bases now through the existing infrastructure.
I, I guess, I saw a bunch of calculations. Yeah, but I, I didn't, I didn't really fully understand.
No, no, it's, those calculations basically say that we're decreasing impermeable surface, and when you decrease it, it lowers the peak flows. Um, so we're, we have less flow in each, um, storm event, that existing conditions.
Okay. Um, and I guess that one other question then. Sometimes comes up is a noise during the demolition. Is it? Do we expect any particular large, uh, doing any rock drilling or? Pile driving or anything like that, right? This is.
Correct, so the intent is not to, um, disturb anything more than we need to below grade. Um. So all the demolition will take place up top. If they extract some foundations, they'll be shallow foundations. Um, so it will be the noise of the building coming down, but those will be during, well, the working hours, it won't be on at night or weekends.
Okay, so we're, we're talking like a, you know, seven in the morning, this, seven in the evening type of work schedule, something like that.
I think it's seven to five, is that correct?
We would consider your orders, but, yeah, we're thinking seven to five.
Okay.
Would be the worst, particularly seven in the future.
Okay, all right, um. Is everything all right, is anybody, anybody have anything else? All right, um, I'll open it up to public comment, or any, any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application? There anybody on the Zoom call wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anybody, any members of the public in the room who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody on the Zoom call wish to speak in, in opposition to the application? Anybody in the room wish to speak neither in favor or opposed to the application? Yes, sir.
My name's Tenforpanos.
Yes.
My name's Tenforpanos, uh, I'm in the butter, I'm sorry, the panel is C A P A and O. Forty-two circle add, sort of. I have just some questions. Um. The demolition is then gonna be manual, but it's not gonna be an explosion?
Yes, no explosions, no explosion.
So that takes care of that.
We have, we are right next door, we have a carriage house for our garage, that can't be a hundred feet from the building, I mean, it's right on their line of your parking lot, so. You know, we just have some concern and.
What we were concerned with is there's. A number of trees along our barrier, the, the. The line between Pfizer and us, um, that are being strangled to death. And sooner or later, they're gonna come down. And I was hoping we could get it addressed. At this time, and have them replaced with some sort of, um, evergreen type of trees. And that's, that's what extended my conference.
Yeah. It's sort of, they're, that building, as you know, it's like a barrier to the plants. They're not plants, plants that grow, they're plants, they're pipes, they're, you know. Now that's going, and that's gonna be our view. But when we. When we bought the house, it was all trees, and then. Two years ago, for some reason, Pfizer cut down every other one. Now, we, we couldn't even see the building when we first came, and now we can see the building, and I understand it's their property, they can do what they want. Um. But now it's like, now we're gonna see pipes and everything, so we just have a little concern about. What's gonna change in our, you know, we have a beautiful home.
Okay, thank you. What, your first name?
Jean, Jean Anne.
Jean Anne. All right, um.
Your address.
Forty-two circle add.
Anything else?
That's right, yeah, that's okay.
No, it's Sir Parker.
Yeah. So, I, well. Ms. Mello?
Yeah.
Could you, can I ask you, what, so I'd like to just.
And one more thing for the record, I, I finished that, I had called building and, and planning and building, whatever. Scott Regan. And he told me to come here. Not to make a comment against, that's why you're in here. My apologies.
Cause they could have sent something.
Yeah, this wasn't a gunshot.
Uh, is, is part of the pipe rack coming down too? I thought I read that, the, the pipe rack.
Yes.
From. One of the other. Cause it runs from several buildings along that. Along the river, correct?
Yeah, so we looked into this, I did speak to Scott last week too, um. So, and we looked at, uh, forty-two circle add, so right now there's about a fifty foot. Uh, wide buffer of trees in like the narrow section, it's, um, some high trees, but it's mostly, probably mostly deciduous, three and a half, so when it comes down, you can see it. Um, there's fifty foot buffer, there's a twenty foot. Wide driveway, curved driveway that will stay. Um, and then there's the building, um, so the building's gonna come down, and then we're taking. Out, um, over, over two hundred feet of pipe rack between the building and the existing pipe rack. So once everything comes down, you'll have about three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the property. Into the site before you see that pipe rack, so it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long distance, and the, um. The buffer is not gonna be touched, it's gonna remain. Um, so you'll really see it, it'll be, uh. A slope coming down, gradual slope with some lawn and some stones, I would say. Um, and the pipe rack will be about three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet in that property line.
Cause it, I mean, will, the pipe rack, but we've taken down back to the next building in the.
Um, back to the next building, there's, um, it's gonna be taken back, there's a retaining wall right there, um, Pfizer has. The pipe rack come down, and then that's where really the ledge of the stone ends in, on campus, so they can go underground through utilities, so. Utilities will stay, um, running along this retaining wall that runs parallel with the Thames River. Um, but we're taking back a hundred and fifty feet of it. Um, before the utilities drop down and they go underground through campus.
All right, thank, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, just when this was gonna happen? Um, they love it to happen in June, to start happening in June, but I think with the building.
What's that?
Would this be going on the weekends?
Stop playing. All right, other questions, comments and commissioners? Leslie, anything else to add? All right, um, are we ready to toss public hearing? There's a motion. Could move. Close the doors. Second. Second. All right. Motion's been made, made in second, there's a, worth a discussion about the motion, both the public hearing. All right, jury done, and all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those abstentions, so that motion passes by zero zero. All right, public hearing is closed. Okay, um. Next item on the agenda is for iteration and action from the public hearing. So, um. Questions or comments, comments of commissioners on the application and?
Just a general comment, I think if we approve this, we have to put a moratorium on removing buildings until you build more, right? They're two down, and the interest in economics is big building.
Yeah. I, I think that's economic development.
Yeah. It's out of our scope, but it'd be clear.
Would be nice, um, and, and somebody else have any, any comments on it? And yeah, it seems fairly straightforward, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're taking down a building that's, that's not being used. Um, it's, uh, we're, you know, we're reducing the amount of impermeable surface, which is a good thing. Um. There's, you know, asbestos. Um, there's, you know, asbestos has been abated, there's um no other permits required, storm waters managed effectively, um, noise. Doesn't seem like it's gonna be an issue, work hours are considerable. Um, I I I would. We should approve the the site plan, they have the cam application, we would need to vote on each one separately, correct?
Yes, the only other thing that may wanna consider, and this is. Yes, or if you wanna put um conditions on the um on the times of work, simply if they can come back for permission to work. If they need to work later hours or on weekends, so we're not excluding that possibility because it's clear to the public what the hours are. What is the city ordinance? I believe it's seven to it's seven to six to six, um, it's like. Oh, yeah.
Uh, the noise ordinance has only been in existence for six months. I thought it was just something like ten years ago. We didn't have one for six months ago, different tape. But uh, so I'm curious what.
Because it's an ordinance, it's not through this commission, the council? So if you wanted, you could also just put um a comment thing that says consistent with any city ordinance.
And some somewhat made a made comment and said it's gonna be consistent with ordinance, but.
I believe it's seven to ten.
Okay, so 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 we set some kind of a.
Just, I would just put the language consistent with the ordinance, uh, if if there becomes a problem, then the council can pick it up and make a future kind of, I I'd just be weary to add more, seems like we have ordinance in it, so if we're gonna follow them, so or that we need to add more verbiage to it, but.
I also don't think, like with other applicants, they're trying to get things done quickly. Where I don't think there's a huge rush to tear down the buildings. I mean, it's, am I wrong by that look?
No, no, I'm trying to answer your question, it's uh, we'd like to have it moving down by the end of the year.
Yeah, so I love, I don't see that.
We can accelerate, people try to accelerate that. Uh, we don't have really sure the duration yet.
Well, you know, the the thing is, if 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 we if we could potentially allow that and there's a problem, then we have to come back and make some kind of a change to it, you know? Whereas if we were to strip it upfront, then if they wanna go beyond that, they'd have to come and ask for permission. And the easier way they handle that, you know, for you. But so, you know.
But but again, like like Bob said, it would be, it would be adding to what, you know? We'd be adding language to an existing ordinance essentially, I don't know that we wanna take that on. I think the problem would be with the ordinance with the council at that point, if there there were, probably doesn't sound like this is a candidate for that.
Well, probably not, but.
Other things that go with um working hours, it isn't just the noise.
True.
Um, you know, traffic and the whole things, and again, not computing any bad motives or anything else, um, it's a lot, it's much more difficult to go in the other direction as the chairman said, it's it's harder to.
Are are the, aren't our zoning regulations clear about, like between our zoning regulations and ordinances? This should be adjudicated or, you know, I get, I'm weary to sort of step out of our lane in in the territory of the council for ordinance stuff and uh applicant by applicant sort of adding this language. We should sort of address it, and then when we approve things, it it falls into the domain of what's either in the zoning and what's in the ordinance, we don't.
I agree that in a perfect world, that's how it would be, um, that is not what, that is the that is not what we have in the zoning regulations, um, it is part of what the various points that there's language written to be adopted at some point. Um, but that's not what's in there now, and the noise ordinance is actually a nuisance ordinance, um, so it, part of the basis for it was um, you know, part lab parties, late nights, um, things like that, so it it addresses a slightly different um set of issues than construction.
In our, in the latest zoning changes that we uh we worked on, did we set these hours in that document?
So so I guess, just just to clarify, so I, I think what we're we're talking about setting hours on on operation of a a particular project, not not really bringing or concerning or anything, that would just we just wanna give some reasonable timeframe so that, you know, people aren't being kept up at night because of the noise.
Right, but by that, by that same logic, I I I hate the idea that we're gonna, we're gonna legislate working hours, project by project. We we really should have a a standard to fall back on, that way we're not you know, inadvertently inconsistent when you want approval on the next, because we wouldn't wanna give these folks a three thirty except on Tuesdays, you know, kind of restriction, and then the next project gets different hours and somebody, you know?
Right.
So I, if if we put anything on this, I, you know, I would, we accept the application uh with the condition that working hours be during daylight hours, or something along those lines. You you know, until such time as this commission is able to fall back on ordinance and goes clear of guidance. You know, but but it seems like the intent is not to work three shifts on this. So I I think putting, you know, reasonable uh boundaries on it is is good for the sake of residents and and not restrictive to the to the project goals.
Uh, that 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 seems reasonable to be to have in daylight hours, that. I think that 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 should, because otherwise, they have some kind of lighting that would have to be brought in to.
Right, which which brings.
Which which is another, you know, that'd be another issue. Alright, so we'll put a condition on the, we'll put a condition on the approval that um, it works takes takes thirty-nine hours.
Dawn's dusk.
Just that makes us do it.
Well, I just, and they said they wanna get the building down by the end of the year, by the end of the year, working hours would be considerably smaller than they are right now, so.
Imagine the biggest part will be down. Remember, you want to let they are right now is six of fall.
Right, I'm just thinking that this this carries it then, you know, some part of it carries in October, the trucks, they wanna start their shift in six, six thirty and start. Then, you know. I really prefer to stay out of things, start working on it, but uh but I understand that they're they're, we know they have something to fall back on here, but uh in in the absence of it, it's easy enough to say.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I think a deal would be, you know, you know, something on the regulations, then we could just, you know, we we could refer to and say within, as prescribed in break conditions section, X Y Z. Um, so that's, I guess it goes on the to-do list. But but um, but you know, for purposes that I thought it doesn't seem reasonable to everybody, so we would so we need a motion to approve, first, the motion to approve uh site plan number five zero four. Um. The work to proceed between dawn and dusk. For Mr. Boris, second. This has been made seconded, any further discussion? Alright, those, all those in favor of approving site plan number five zero four, what work to be performed from between dawn and dusk? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, alright, that motion is approved, five zero zero. Alright, now a motion to approve CAM number three, three eight.
We need to apply the same caveat.
I I would, I would think so, yes, so, alright. Motion from Mr. Rusk, is there a second? Second from Mr. Boris. Alright, so there's a motion to approve CAM number three three eight with uh work to take place between dawn and dusk. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, alright, that motion is approved, five zero to zero. Right? Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Alright, next item on our agenda is uh is the application site plan number five zero five, this is the enhanced improvements LLC. Thirty-six North Street, accessory building located on the same lot with with use, to be used for outside storing equipment. Um, is that? Are we, we're ready to, are you ready to hear this?
Well, we're ready to have a conversation.
Okay, alright, please, sir.
Good evening, uh David Brecka with Advance Movement Thirty-six North Street, thanks for having me here, Dan.
Thanks, Greg, if you don't hold on just one minute, we'll get the commission dropping summary of where we are. Um, last week. Scott Reagan, the building official, Heidi Camo, the MS four project manager and myself, then with representative from CLA Engineering and um Chris, I'm Chris.
Chris.
Uh, who is an employee of Mr. Brecka, uh, and we discussed some of the issues that were surrounding this uh project, and I just wanna be clear from the beginning on what some of the um constraints are. This project, um there was an application file, um special permit file in two thousand fourteen that expired in two thousand nineteen, and there were several issues that city had with it, there were a number of um, things that were, that needed to be uh completed that were not, or changed because they hadn't been done by the right way, one example is um, that offense was put up and it was put up um in part on city property. So I, this is not a a gotcha comment or anything else, it's just, I just want the commission to be aware of the fact that this, the special permit that had been um approved in two thousand fourteen was never closed out um by application, and so because of that, because those um conditions of approval have not been met. This commission is not able to entertain and vote in favor of another special permit. Uh, we can have a conversation as I did with people that I named a moment ago. But there are some things that need to be done before this application can be approved. Um, so this is also, and the application was also submitted in a um in order to rectify an issue where Mr. Brecka had started the project without permits. Cease the uh working on that, um, and so coming with the to the commission with the application is a way, is the way they rectify.
So what you said just a minute ago, Leslie, you said maybe I misunderstood what you meant, you meant that we can't continue the previous application? So we can't approve an application.
That's correct, we can have a conversation about this, and Mr. Brecka can explain what it is that he's looking to do, if he'd like, but um there are, there are those constraints on this.
Right, I guess, but yeah, a a new application, a new file that addresses the the current, uh, current issues, as you said.
Except it does.
Okay, I I understand, but I mean, for a new application to be presented and approved, we would have to do those things, we'd have to answer those questions, figure those things.
And.
But it could be, it could be, the application could be made, as long as it it met the intent and the needs and and uh, if you, if you could approve certain things.
Well, except that we would want an engineer's report um in order to, the things that are necessary. Things that need to be rectified are, um, there's a patinaing wall that needs to be certified by the engineer. Um, there is a um the fence needs to be relocated, there was a sign that had been put up that has since been taken down. There's one other. So hence my, oh, my words.
So I I guess I'm just trying to get to the the up-down part of this, we we have, we have, this is the, this is an updated application, seconded new application.
It's filed as a new application.
If the old one can't be carried forward anymore because it expired.
Yes, and this one can't be proved straight up without addressing.
Separate issue, separate issue, we have a new application in front of us, looks a little like the old one.
Different project.
Okay, okay, alright, so the application in front of us, we we can't go any further with it because it doesn't address some things that were out there.
There's still outstanding issues from previous.
This isn't any, we've we've had applications like this before, they've come, but they've got issues, they're kind of dead in the water for us, we're not really in a position to start viewing it at this point, until the the staff work in the background is.
So this would just be a, this is basically just an information pass at this point, is that? Before we look at it, just let us know what Mr. Brecka's thinking about doing.
Good evening, again, this is David Brecka, thank you, Mrs. Crane, wow, what a bad guy, huh? Sorry, I did not know, I've been attached here in this town for a long time and I'm completing my little argument here that. uh I spoke to my civil engineer, you know, you asked, it's been very responsive. Um, we have all, we can argue, I mean, agree to disagree, that I have complied all the paperwork then back in two thousand fifteen when the job was done, otherwise I would have not been in. Now for the life of you, a paper trail that you guys can find, I don't think that I should be painted at that kind of picture of being a taxpayer and say. The other thing is that I've been trying, and I know this is not your concern, and as you can get from my tone, I'm not really too thrilled about my introduction because I came here as a good taxpayer. But, and I know this is completely a new application. Uh, the civil engineer that speak prior to coming in here, he will settle, he's going to certify that now. He asked which retaining wall, of course, CD has no idea which retaining wall we're talking about. It is a mafia blocks retaining wall, it's not Bridge Street with it or Street. Now this gets to tell you that I'm the bad guy, my civil engineer was certified that, yes, the fence is in the wrong spot. Completely understand, completely agree with that. I posted a sign, I I took it down as far as that goes. And as far as the new application, my architect was working on the plans, we had some free times, I was open and only footed without intention pouring or doing anything, we had some slow days. Now I started before I doing the permit. Uh, I've been doing this for twenty five years, been uh chairman of economic development for Donald Dratton, I've been around, I contributed to town and the city. I know that um this is the decision we make, uh Mrs. Frank for that, and if you guys don't want to hear it, that's okay, totally understand, but my civil engineer is working on it and rectifying all these issues. And they're only moderate issues and the biggest one is the fence. So other than that, I I could uh argue that I have always complied with the city and I've never had an issue and this is a big deal in there and I should have known before I came here tonight that this is a conversation. So, and I brought my a structural engineer. So completely understand, I'm, and for record, I'm very dissatisfied, I'm very unhappy with this and it should, you know, as a taxpayer citizen and trying to keep it if my property is good looking as possible I can for the entrance of the city, I I just feel that I deserved a little bit of more courtesy. And again, no one is pulling a fast one, you know. So that's all I have in my apologies that I was introduced as that bad guy here for my project, all I'm asking for is smoke and a D, we have uh burgundy vehicles, the sun beats them up. And it's taking the paint out of them and I'm trying to put them during the winter and the summer and the open can of view roof. I spoke with my neighbor Marco Finger, he has no issues as far as that goes, I'm trying to even clean the surrounding. That just means so. My apologies for any inconvenience to all of you, that's all I have to, since this is a discussion, I don't think that I need to continue any further till I satisfy it. Any other question?
No. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just started this process now and I've brought a lot of people who worked for three months or so, zoning should have not been anything to this extent because we're not, it's just just a rule, so I thank you for your time and uh we'll proceed to the later.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, next item on the agenda is discussion of possible zoning regulation amendments. So.
No one. I do, I got an email from Cameron. Read his email first so I don't forget. Just notified me that he wouldn't be able to attend tonight's meeting. If you don't mind, if at tonight's meeting, the commission discusses next locations for zoning amendments. Could you pass my, along my thoughts to the commission? And so this is the following paragraph, I think we should focus next on five corners, this serves an important role in part of of our community. My question is, how far in either direction do we consider five corners, Mitchell, Pukonic and Benham? Are long roads and with variety and character along them? I know that a five corners designation already exists, but this may be an opportunity for us to reevaluate where the area is and be more deliberate about the size of the five corners area.
Okay. So, I mean, I think we we talked a little bit about, you know, where we put we should next, I think. We've had some discussions with five corners, that made sense. There's also a, there's a stormwater in a district group looking at five corners right now too, so.
Well, we may see them out there planting trees.
Is there, yeah, so I mean, that 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 makes sense to me, um. Yeah, I guess the other area where we also might want to think about looking at is um waterfront business. You know, because that's which, which is I guess, was using your barbell example, right, we've got, maybe we looked at the the commercial songs on the north, on the north end of town. It's just like five corners, the other end of the barbell and uh
Yeah, it's kind of.
Business district is the, is the bar?
Yes, that is associated places with the the counties.
Are there areas that are way out of alignment with the P O C D? The zoning regulations and what we want to accomplish on the latest P O C D? Maybe that should drive you know, where we look next.
And I I agree with you, and that is the gist of the P O C D is to move opportunities for economic development for housing. That's more than abbreviated summary. And so looking at, just to to back up a minute with the the barbell, have I explained what that was before? Yeah. I mean, the goal, the goal is to develop a couple of, two places on either end and then allow it to infill over time. You know, you know, more incremental fashion. So one of the things that we looked at is the possibility of now focusing on that other end of Main Street, so it's not about developing Main Street itself. It's about, that becomes the incremental development portion. But developing closer to Electric Boat. You may have read that Electric Boat has purchased Garbo's, so at least something will be looking different there, presumably. And, oh, in, you know, shortly, so there's going to be some pickup in terms of activity there and the opportunity for economic growth. It's also the lower part of the Tiff District that has been sort of slow development mode for the last several years. Tax equipment financing district. And so looking to sort of develop the other end of that. And doing it in a way that is consistent with a lower density development. Yet again, the same or similar goals as in terms of the P O C D, in terms of increasing housing, there's increasing the opportunities for development. And also not, uh, you know, not going to people's backyards. Not addressing, not looking, we're not looking, I don't think, and certainly not in the P O C D, not looking to take over residential areas and develop them into just to be clear, that's not what's any.
Well, there, I mean, there's there are, it it it's it's a separate zone, correct, correct, I mean, it's
The, which is a separate.
Like the one with the five corners, it's five.
Yes, there is a sec, there is a five corner zone.
Right.
I think that's what Cameron was actually addressing was that there are, there is a section on the map that says this is five corners. So you may want to look at that, see if it makes sense to such that um and why we would want to do that and what we would want to say.
It seems to be that that's kind of the only real at scale area that we, you know, the other seems to be economic development, attracting businesses, I mean, not to pat ourselves on the back, but I think we did a great job with that other area. And the, you know, the rest of it's very residential, especially with Electric Boat buying Garbo's area. I think, you know, Main Street is about attracting businesses and dealing with, but the rest of it rest of the area, it, you know, we're a small city. It seems like if we want to do something uh creative and and lean into the P O C D objectives rather than having floating zone, it seems like the, the pocket around five corners would be, you know, a process to start.
Other thoughts?
Well, we did a lot of work the past two years on the 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 less exciting aspects of regulations, cleaning up the getting rid of the leaves and vows and the, and bringing the basic language, so that just a little old stuff up to the bar. Reading out the the multiple terms for the same thing, making consistency, how how much of that that we already have done can be just scraped paste into into an application to update language in the other zones. So that in in all these other zones, we go to address them, especially the ones that are mostly residential, not much change to be made apart from the cleaning up of the language bees. We, I I think we could, you know, unless there are a few consonants we we address. Those other zones could be, could be, you know, an application to, we we can create an application to update the language in those zones without having to change much else. That would be pretty low impact in terms of, you know, uh public tolerance of of change. You know, I mean, that, you know, like you said, we've got just a few areas that that are that have that kind of complexity to them. And and many other zones that are just pretty much straight residential, unless we're uh believing something about those, you know, which I don't but but seems like we could queue up a number of zones for some just basic language change. You know, it it handles the business in that way, but uh if we if we wanted to start with five corners, we could start with that part. You know, just just clear out all the uh unnecessary language and, you know, bring up the base language to that part, we could look at what what other aspects are are in need of are real deep dug type effort. Now, is it, is it dwelling units per parcel, is it?
No, but never do dwelling units per parcel with my recommendation, and that's dwelling units per acre. As a measure.
Right, I'm just, as I'm saying, as an aspect of, as an aspect of the zone that we want to address.
Right, yes. I think that there are two different things that need to be addressed. One is exactly what you have stated, is looking at the zones as they are described, as they are laid out with P O C D in terms of what they contain, they don't contain uh and what we're looking for. The other is the standard section, which is um I think that the that they don't, they apply citywide for the most part. So for instance, signage, earth moving. They'll make sure we address noise control, what would that go in that, so, yep, yeah. There are, so there, if you look in section seven of the regulations, it's basically everything there. That the section is called standards. Uh, so it's looking, so I think that those need to be those definitely need to be looked at, um and we may want to look at that, for instance, signage as an example. In some places we may allow larger sizes than in other places, in some places we may allow only you know, I allow atrains in some places and not in other places. Fortunately, the city doesn't seem up in arms about atrains, but I've worked with other municipalities where it's just a human cry about, yes, we want atrains, no, we don't want atrains. So looking at things like that, um and I would also suggest getting uh, we might be able to get an engineer from with with Heidi Kamo, the MS four project manager to talk about stormwater and update our regulations about stormwater. So the things that are not, it's a little different than what we've done till now, but they all work together.
Yeah, I guess five courses, you know, it it's kind of, it's sort of an interesting area in that it's, you know, there's some commercial properties, there are, there's residential properties, there are, you know, there are, there are some mixed use buildings in there. And, you know, I mean, one of the things that we, you know, I tried to in that area in our it's mixed use development, when it was commercial and residential in the same, you know. And that, there are there are parts there that are, you know, say um on mid, you know, on Mitchell Street versus along Benham Road that might be more, you know, appropriate for mixed use development than the the parts along the Benham where it's close to a single family neighborhood or multifamily neighborhood. Um, but yes, so I mean, there's, there are, you know, there are in interesting, you know, possibilities there. Um, and, you know, and we may want to take a look at, I guess, exactly where five corners is defined and how far in our far extents. Are we, you know, the what is 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 what we have drawn is the boundaries now, was that, you know, should that be adjusted? So I, I mean, it sounds like that's a, you know, some some consensus. If you think so, you've got, you know, the business about this.
Yeah, I was going to take a ride around the city and kind of, because it's not that big of an area and there's not that much variation, so kind of get a sight, look at and see, okay, this looks like you could do something that is going to be residential and that's it.
Should we, should we start with a zoning map change, we just take a look at what the five corners is right now, have discussions on what we think it should be, and then just do that first and then follow up with.
But I I keep thinking, I'm sure there's areas that
But I, I keep thinking, I'm sure there's areas that we're just not thinking about. So if you take a ride around, look, if there's nothing that's not it's not that big of an area.
We can make it bigger. Or, or, or smaller, yeah, or, in fact, or, or, you know, reshaping or something.
I mean, if we're, if we, we take a, we, if our, our next step is to workshop the definition of five corners. I mean, I think, I think, like you said, it kind of starts with understanding where the boundaries are. And then you, you kind of take a, uh, you know, take stock of what is contained inside those batteries. And could one set of regulations apply well to all the things that are in there? And if, you know, if, if not, maybe you, maybe you make some adjustments to the battery to include or exclude sections that would not, would not survive well with, with blanket changes. And I think that that would be a good first movement to want to address five corners.
Actually, well, not just five corners, but to me, that's a good example of, okay, we, when I think of five corners, it's probably different than the area you think of as five corners, because I don't go there that often. So to actually go to the site, look around and say, yeah, maybe a little more this way, maybe a little less this way. But to just sit here and look at the map, I don't really, you know, okay, it's got an area show, but until you see what's there, whether it's houses, commercial, whatever, it's hard to say, yeah, we could probably expand it. So I'm just going to take a ride around, I got nothing to do. But I think it's a good idea because we, I was telling Leslie, um, on my way here, I had to go over to the strip mall in Broad, and they just opened a new gym over here. There's seven lanes of parked cars at that gym. I, I thought, were they holding something, but, so there's a lot of possibilities around here that I don't think we're thinking about. So it's just open lots.
So maybe just does somebody want to take on, um, over the next month, just looking at possible, um, boundaries for a five corner zone and looking at it as what it could be, and, um, that'll give me a little which is, I mean, more than anything. Um, to, I'd like to get the standards done, so if you guys want to look at the map, go out, walk around, take drive by or whatever, do it together, do it individually, sort of.
You have to be careful about doing it together.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, you are absolutely correct.
Think you can do it individually and come here and talk about it.
Correct, is, is it three? Yes, can have more than three. It's one of those store. Thank you. We go that familiar with the area. Then we can move the mouse. I'll, I'll start looking at it, it's just to kind of get a wall, start a whole set.
Would you be able to send us, uh, five corners? So, so, um
Yep.
Certainly, where those batteries are, right?
Sort of say what that is in, at least there. Do a little larger, what is currently in the five corners zone. Take a look at it for a moment.
Okay.
And I'll send you a copy of the regulations as well. It's not very long, but that
The five corners section, yeah. So then we floating zone go away and then well, I mean, no, I mean
I will simply say, reiterate that I think that floating zones are, they can be I'm sure that they can be the right tool for the right problem. I have seen more problems with them than not, and I would much rather than having to, the commission in conjunction with public, um, figure out what it is that is wanted and zone for that. Supposed to, this is, you know, here's the cloud here, find it, and land it. Maybe somewhere where it shouldn't be.
So to rephrase my statement, you think there might be a better way to handle that?
Yes.
Than, than just that, that's a fair statement.
I heard that many places where it's on the float, the city.
No, no.
So it feels like it's kind of a way of you know, moving a, moving a, a laser pointer from depth or where you want to pounce it. You know, effect. So change.
Yeah, it, it really adds
Better to be deliberate and touchy.
Okay. All right, that sounds good, other comments about the condition things? Still waiting to hear anything on the, on the um, G C changes, correct?
The, um, I'm sorry.
G C R.
Oh, that, it's still, it's in court, it'll be there for a bit, and, um, my understanding is that the return, there is no date yet for the return of record. That's what I know. I think that if we're going to have any other conversation about it, we should do it executive session with our chief.
No, no, I agree, I just, is, is a
What I've given you is public information.
Right, so there's other, there's lots of, yeah, that other, so, your permission to
Commission has nothing to act on.
That, that's, that's, that, that was my question.
What, what's next on the agenda?
So nine for executive session.
There's, there's no, there's no, there's no issue, it's come up, they're discussing executive session on this.
No, that was why I'm here.
All right. Okay, um. Anything else, anybody?
The only other thing is the budget has been approved by the council yesterday last night. And they cut twenty thousand pounds of the planning budget. I think that we'll still be able to do the things that I think are most important. We'll have a content like now, they will never take us under where we're, oh.
Six, six, you've taken, you've taken up the regulations on you. All right. Good. It's good to know. Uh, anybody have anything else? All right, um, we can see what you're we should got this version on. Second, this is water. Any discussion on the auction? Although there's a, guys. Opposed, abstentions, all right. Auctions approved, they're adjourned at seven fifty-three.